Order, pledge of allegiance.
Hey, can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Dave Dylan?
Here.
Council members, Ken Mueller?
Here.
Norris Johnson?
Here.
Lindsay Larson?
Here.
Lori Game?
Here.
Approval of the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for that night?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. And we have no additions or changes?
None.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor indicate with an eye.
An eye.
Opposed. Agenda passes. Onto the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from October 17th, 2024. Approval of bills and resolution number 2439 donations. Get a motion for that.
Move for approval?
A second.
Any discussion on that? I just, as I mentioned to Tammy, that donation of the podium and speaker is really going to be nice for the Grecky Center. That was a great donation, thank you. All in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Consent agenda passes, open forum. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address anything that is not on the agenda, please stand up and give your name at this time. Hearing none. I'll do what I should have done at the beginning, and if you have not signed in, please remember to sign in tonight when you, at the table over there. One of these times I'll get it at the beginning, Doris. No public hearing tonight, no requesting communications. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. They are not here yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll just move them down until there's an opening, does that sound all right?
Yes.
Okay. Remember to come back to that. So we'll move to reports of departments, boards, and commissions, city manager.
I don't have anything at this time.
Police, just the incident summary, I'm sure they're out busy tonight. Parks. Update on the sound panel installation.
They are in, I think Mary Nicholson, I think you were going to check on one more thing with the installer.
Yeah, there are two panels missing. They had a problem with the installation of them, so they still have two panels to complete, but they have the acoustic cloud in and the socket.
Were you in there? Cam, did you make noise in there or anything, could you tell?
It's hard to tell, but it's just one person, but you can tell a little difference.
Okay, good. Anything else with that? Nope, okay. Public Works, Northern Lines Contracting Construction Contract Change Order Number One. Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion for approval.
A second.
Any questions on that? It's kind of what we were hoping wasn't going to happen, but... Okay, no other discussion, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed. So, construction order change number one passes. Public Works, Gary's not here.
He assault sanding right now?
Yep, I figured that. Fire Department, update on the truck purchased through Surplus Services.
We bought a used grass rig that's 20 years newer than our previous grass rig or the one we have, so we paid $20,000 some dollars for it.
$1.40.
Yep. And, yeah, so we're hoping to get it in service. Probably it'll be in service just before grass fairy season, so we got to do some decals and some, few things, nothing real major, it's mostly well done. And then we, I got you guys to report for this year, for our fiscal year. We have 158 calls total, a lot of those were medical type liposysis calls. Yeah, mostly, pretty much mostly that. So you guys have that. On the new engine, got bumped up in line, so probably going to have that a little bit quicker than we thought, so that'll be nice.
Did they give you like a deadline?
Well, they talked about, like, right at the end of the year, but there's a few things that have happened, so it'd probably be like end of January or so.
Oh, okay.
So that's about all I got for that.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Jesse. Moving on to planning and zoning. Conditional use permit violation discussion. Randy Ryman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to take this and the next two items of the minor lot split from Malacca Park and the variance for Malacca Park. Skip to the end, simply asking the council to take no action at this point in time. To bring it back to where things have been on that property for a while now, there's been some ongoing violations of the conditional use permit and violations of the city's nuisance ordinance relating to the number of vehicles that are on the property and the quality of the vehicles that are on the property. The city's been working to try and get Mr. Ryman to correct that for some time. No action was being taken, so the matter came to me about a month ago. I sent a demand letter to Mr. Ryman and Malacca Park LLC advising them of the ongoing violations and the fact that the city council is likely going to be addressing the violation, both in the context of the CUP as well as what was before, would be before, it is before the council, the lot split application, the variance application. After that, both letters were sent, I was contacted by council for Malacca Park LLC. We had a very productive conversation, I was advised that they were going to be taking action as the property owners and landlord under the terms of the lease. I did forward to Tammy, and I think hopefully she's gotten to you guys copies of correspondence, that they sent to Mr. Ryman both two notices of default and another notice of some sort, I can't recall what it was called. But in any event, they've indicated their intention, if he's not able and or willing to bring the property because compliance by year's end, it's their intention to do so under the terms of their lease, and so he'll be in contact with me and Tammy and perhaps Chief Rassell about how we want to make sure the property's compliance, when and where and how, and tow trucks and all that kind of stuff. The, at the Monday's Planning Commission meeting, both the subdivision, lot split, and the various requests were on the agenda. Because we were bumping up against this, the deadline for action succeeding rule, we already had an extension on one. I had some conversations with Phil and the recommendation to the Planning Commission was, because the property was not in compliance and we had not had an affirmative written consent by both applicants to extend the deadline further, was to deny, recommend denial to you guys. My understanding that since that time, I think yesterday, perhaps today, both Mr. Ryman and representative from Malacca Park LLC both did sign the consents that I had requested, extending the deadlines for the city to act on both of these actions until January 25th, 2025. So that buys everybody the time that we need in hopefully obtaining compliance, whether it's voluntary by Mr. Ryman or voluntary on part of Malacca Park LLC, given the authority that they have under the terms of their lease as the property owner. So basically, that's just kind of an update. No action is required tonight, other than, I guess, you could probably motion the table the action till whatever the date for the January meeting would be. And, Loris, you have copies of the two signed documents by Mr. Ryman and from the LLC? Yeah, not right now, but at some point in time, if you can scan them and email to me. That would be probably the only thing to do is to motion the table conditional use permits, the minor lot split resolution and the variance resolution to whatever dates, and then hopefully by the planning...
January 15th.
...dates, they will...
15th or 16th, 16th or...
15.
Oh, the 15th.
Remove that one.
That's right, January 15th.
So, what you said earlier still applies, so they're going to, they want them to act by January 1?
Yeah, that's the information that I received.
Okay.
When I sent my information and my demand to them, to the parties, they immediately, they being Malacca Park representatives, you know, and through their attorney, took immediate action at least to contact Mr. Ryman, but there are timeframes within the context of their lease.
Sure.
That they can't, you know, operate as soon as I had demanded that they do. I, so I, quite frankly, speaking for the council, said, "We want compliance, we don't want to have to do anything in the way of illegal action, so if you need a little bit of time, fine, as long as you guys are actually doing something." So we'll find out in the coming months whether they do or not. If they don't, then the city council can simply deny the lot split, deny the variance, and I can prosecute everybody.
Okay. So can I get a motion to table that until our January 15th meeting?
I'll make a motion to table it. Is that the next two, that's the next two, the minor?
Yep.
Ken and then Norris?
Yep. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So we'll table that, thank you, Damian.
Yep.
So we move to resolution 24, we don't have a number on that yet, or do we have it on this? Is it on the handout?
42, 24, 42.
24, 42? Okay. Variance for John's Door Service. That is the handout. Can I get a motion on that?
Move for approval?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion on that? I thought what you sent us was pretty obvious, but I don't, is there anything that needed to be added, I think they're there, yep.
Yep.
Anything we need to know other than what we have?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, I thought everything was...
The issue that we're trying to address.
Sure, made sense. No questions, then all in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Your variance passes. Ordinance 535, recreational vehicles first reading. I get a motion for that.
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, I gotta try and find it. There we go. Anything, Tammy, we need to discuss on that?
The Planning Commission just had some questions about where they would be and if the ordinance pretty much explains where they can have them and that they have to have them on a improved surface, either on the side or in their front yard or front driveway portion. The goal is to get them off of the street. So this will help that a lot.
Okay, any questions on, well, I guess I, did I get a motion on that? I did?
Yeah.
I don't remember, I was too busy reading. All right, if no other question or discussion, all in favor of ordinance 535 indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. 535 passes. Do we have a number on this one? I gotta go back and forth here. 536, okay. Too many papers here, doesn't it? Ordinance 536, allowing retail sales in 1-I-1 Industrial District, first reading.
So moved. A second.
Want to do a little history on this quick?
We had come to our attention that more and more retail businesses are ending up in our industrial park. Heggie's has always been there, and a lot of the other ones have had retail, small portions of their shops retail. So it was only fitting that we changed the zoning code to accommodate that as well, to just make sure that our zoning matches what's actually happening in the industrial park area. And that would be the reason for the amended ordinance.
We had already passed a year or so ago, allowing a group hub of that type of place up there, so we're already kind of setting the stage for some retail if it's available.
I saw you checked with some of the other cities around, and they do.
Oh, yes.
And these many, much businesses we can.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a real good showing from quite a few of the owners out there that wanted to come to the Planning Commission and just be in support of it.
So there was a lot of input from all those guys, and, yep, good. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance 536, indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed. 536 passes. Airport Newsletter. Airport, my page.
Informational.
Yep, just information. Committee is a budget committee, we need to call for a special meeting for the review of the final budget work session. When are we looking at that?
Would December 11th work for everyone? It is a Wednesday night.
Does for me, I just need to check time.
I'm gone to a concert that night.
I want to go on with you.
Pardon me?
No, just kidding.
But if you guys want to go with me, no.
The 11th, you said?
Well, Lori's going to be gone on the 11th, okay.
Because our council meeting is on the 18th.
We need to do it before then, obviously.
Yeah, it's a work session to...
12th, or is that not good?
Yeah, that'll work.
You have a game ready?
I don't, I gotta check again, it doesn't show on, but I gotta check again because that seems weird, but...
Otherwise, I was gonna say the 9th.
12, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, no, we play Friday. We have a late practice, but...
So maybe the 12th?
Are they all late that week, I suppose?
Yeah, but that's all right, I can, we can either go before or after.
Okay, do you want to go like at 5:30?
Could, well, that's when I start. Could we go early, early?
We can.
Like, yeah, 30?
I don't get back to town until 5:30, but...
Okay. 7?
7:00 PM?
Is that too late?
What's the date, what day?
The 12th.
12.
Could we make it at noon?
I could do noon. I'm sure, I'm sure I can figure it out.
Like a noon to 1?
I'm sure I can, yeah. So the 12th is what we're looking at, or are we...
Yep, 12.
12 at noon?
Would that work for everyone, like at noon to 1?
I can make it work, does that work for you?
Yeah, I can.
That's Thursday.
Yep, December 12th.
Yep.
Okay. It'll just basically be going over some of the changes that have taken effect.
Do you need a motion for that?
I do.
Okay, can I get a motion to change, or for a special budget meeting on the 12th, December 12th at noon?
So move.
I'll second that.
All in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, we'll go for that so far.
Okay.
Nothing with EDC, unfinished business, motion to remove from the table as ordinance 530, permitted accessory uses in B1 Central Business District, tarp-like structures. And this was, was this brought up Monday night? Were you there, Norris?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and they were in agreement with changing it to the 200.
Okay. Now that was kind of what you were looking at, wasn't it, Norris?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because it's a typical size for those kind of structures.
Yep.
Is 10 by 20, so...
Okay. Okay, can I get a motion, did I get a motion? Why am I forgetting all my motions? You get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or on that, it's a... Otherwise, all in favor of ordinance 530 indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Ordinance 530 passes. Ordinance 530, permitted accessory uses in B1 Central Business, tarp-like structures, second reading.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? If not, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordinance 530 passes. Sorry, I had the other one that's passed, but it was only removing from the table. All right, now we'll motion remove from the table ordinance 531, permitted accessory uses in B2 General Business District, tarp-like structures.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
There shouldn't be a whole lot of discussion on that unless anybody has want to remove it. All in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So we're back to ordinance 531, permitted accessory uses in B2, the tarp-like structures.
I'll make a motion, a second.
Any in there?
No.
None, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, so we're through 531. New business, minor lot split, Jesse Lateral. Is, are they here? Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't know. Anything you need to add, we got some information on it?
Not necessarily, I'm just rotating all the little buildings right now.
Okay.
Just put that back lot out to have something big enough to do something.
Okay. So the building would sit out the back of the present one to the alley?
Correct.
Okay. Any parking issues?
You know, I'd have a prototype done where parking wouldn't be an issue. I designed it to where we park it for something that goes in there. We have a design for the building.
Okay, perfect.
Do you have anything in mind that you would build?
I do. What I want to do is kind of like a prototype assisted artistic living, where it's just a tiny one. Because my goal is to build these all across Minnesota, and I need like a prototype. My offices is a whole block building, so I kind of need something to show everybody to say, hey, this is what it's going to be like, and the facilities to choose from.
Okay, cool. Interesting. Okay, can I get a motion for the lot split?
So move.
I'll second.
Any other discussion or questions? Thanks for clarifying.
Jesse, when you get closer to kind of your design, just bring it on in and we can sit down and go through zoning.
Are they portable, or?
Oh, no, it's looking like small senior living communities, but autistic living communities, like young adults 18 and older, like they'll kind of function on their own, but still need help, you know, guidance.
Okay, thank you.
So that'll almost be like a model home?
You got it.
Kind of, yeah.
You got it.
Yep, cool. Okay, all in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Oh, lot split passes, good luck. Moving on to city attorney legal services agreement.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Lindsay and Ken?
Yep.
That's what we're...
What's that?
You need to move to talk.
What I'll tell you is that, I don't know if, did Tammy share with you the correspondence that I had done probably about a month and a half ago, I think probably when you guys were first discussing budgetary issues and some of the issues that were going on as far as the extensive write-offs and all that sort of stuff. I had looked at doing something during COVID, or the last contract, but didn't want to. Things are pretty close to, based on this contract, where they, I'm comfortable them being, I'm going to have write-offs and it's going to be in the thousands of dollars every month, because that's just the nature of contract work, I probably write off as much as I make in a given year, that's just the way that it goes. But I can tell you that this is going to be the last significant increase that I envision for quite some time. I'm at a comfortable place now with all my cities, and I'm thinking very likely any increases are going to be limited to coal and stuff, like whatever you guys are doing for your employees and stuff like that, so... That's that, and you guys, I think, are, well, the second to last. My Princeton one should be on the next agenda for the next meeting, so...
Anybody have any questions? I thought it looked fair, and I really, really appreciate the fact that I can get answers, and you're very accessible, and I really appreciate that.
I know, if I can get a call while I'm walking down, you know, Biscayne Boulevard in Miami.
I might have done that. I appreciate your work in the past, too, so, yeah, there's some hectic times.
Yeah.
So... And, hang on, what year is this? We're coming up on 2025.
5, yep.
One more year, and then I get my 20-year, wow, I got my 5, 10, 15.
Give it two or three.
I don't know if we should give them a raise if we're going to give them a plus, you know?
Okay, all in favor of the legal services agreement indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes, your agreement passes. Thank you, Damian.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to C, Jim's Malax Disposal, mixed municipal solid waste haulers agreement. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Who did I?
Take your pick, it was a tie.
Oh, I don't care. Was it Norris? Go for it, Norris.
Okay, I got Lindsay and Norris.
Any discussion from the information we got?
Do I add anything, does it?
Nothing's really going to change, I mean, we just try to keep working more efficient, keep costs the same for the residents, the town and businesses, so...
That's all I would add, I just really appreciate the, not only the work, but you've been really good with rates and, I think, fair.
I moved here in 2004, and I paid $20 a month, I still pay $20 a month for garbage.
Yeah, exactly, with no drop, in fact, probably better service, even it keeps getting better.
Of course you don't pick it up anymore. No, I'm just kidding.
You have to push it down there.
Anything else? Otherwise, all in favor of the haulers waste agreement indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes. Moving on, North Memorial Health Ambulance Lease Agreement. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved. A second.
Any big dramatic changes? No, it looked pretty...
They were in agreement with the 500.
Anybody have questions on it? Pretty straightforward. All in favor indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Lease agreement with North Ambulance passes. Resolution 2441, round two gambling permit application. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So, I was trying to...
Was that Lori Game and Norris?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be the Legion's pull tabs at, at this place?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure I was reading that right.
And meat raffle, too, or just?
Yeah.
I'm sure they'll do a meat raffle.
Yeah, I think they're doing...
But you have to, fill in the bar.
Yeah, that's pretty common.
And they are hoping first of the year, from what I've heard, okay. All in favor of the gambling permit, resolution 2441, indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Permit passes. Under miscellaneous, nothing. Council comments. You want to go first, Norris?
Sure, I would echo, too, that the service that Damian's provided has been very excellent, always available and...
Thank you.
Or at least they call back if he visits, so I appreciate that. And you do such a good job explaining complicated matters.
I'm not that smart, so I have to talk plain. It's not that plain.
It's working, it's working.
Ken?
Yeah, no, not tonight.
Okay, Lindsay?
I got nothing.
Lori?
I'm good.
I'm just going to give you an update on our Empowering Small Minnesota Communities Grant. Yesterday, we had that meeting that I mentioned last month here, we had, I don't know, must have been about 20 people? I think around that?
Yeah, at least.
Everyone from business owners out there in the Malacca Junction area, representatives from East Central Electric, Sean Doctor from Heggie's was there, one of the banks is from Francine Bank, she was here. So it's a really good cross-section of people, very good discussion. Those people from U did a nice job facilitating it. We really talked through a lot of things and made some good plans on how we want to move forward. They, we will have a smaller task force now that'll move forward from there, looking at, like, we identified some ideas, and now we can dive into the grants and figure out like we identified some ideas and now we can dive into the grants and figure out how we can find funding for some of those things. They had well over 200 different grants that are available that could fit for us and they'll kind of help us lead us through that. And then we'll move forward on, you know, how, if we want to go at that land this way, this is how we'll do it, if we're going to go that way. Basically, bottom line is we're moving forward. I think there was a consensus on a plan and now we'll take the next steps and keep moving. And having, you know, the university helping us keeps us on task and moving forward. There's a survey being done, right, out on the property out there now?
Yeah, they'll be working more on that probably in the spring.
Yeah, so, uh, things are moving out there and things are happening, so we got some, we got the ball moving. And again, really good discussion with some really interested people, so it's pretty exciting. It was, it was good to, good to have happened, so we should have more news again in December when we, when we come back.
And then we'll probably set up some meetings with, I think it's like 10 of us in a small work group to go through all of those kind of situations and the best layout of the property and-
Yep, and if anyone wants to attend any of those meetings, you're more than welcome, so. Just so there's not too many and we have to make it a public meeting? I don't, that's Damian's problem. Okay.
You would only have to post it if you had more than three council members.
Okay.
Yep, if you have three council members, you would have to post it.
Yep, and that's what I want to not do. Okay, so that's just for your information again, that we're moving along and things are happening and hopefully we'll get going on that. We did talk a little about Highway 23 project, but that's really for down the road. We are looking at, after we kind of tackle this junction thing, moving on to, what are some issues we can address downtown and that combination with the Highway 23 and the industrial parks? So we wanted to make it clear at the end of the meeting, it's not just a Malacca Junction thing. It's, that's just step one. Then we look at downtown and we look at, because we talked about the importance of not chasing someone new to come in, but taking care of Heggie's, taking care of Tri-Barrick and all those people that are out there.
That'll be good.
That was about it, I think. I have nothing else.
And Tammy is here now from Northland Securities?
Good grief, thank you.
That was quite the drive, I'm sure.
So whenever you're ready, we're kind of at that point, so it's all yours.
Okay. Sorry for my tardiness, but-
And I'll catch everybody up. So we are jumping back to ordinance's resolution, presentation from Northland on water sewer rate study. It is resolution 2440, accepting water and sewer rate study. It's all yours.
Mayor Council, good evening. I am Tammy. I'm Dal with Northland Public Finance. Northland worked with city staff on the preparation of a financial management plan for the utility funds. It is a lengthy report. It was included in the council packet and available to the public. I do have a few slides or presentation to summarize what was in that lengthy report and that was also in the council packet. And I would note, the reason the report was so dense as far as number of pages, if you will, it was very comprehensive. It covered all of the utility funds. It includes pro forma's, financial plan, detailed revenue expense balance sheet. And this is not your budget or your audit. This is forward-looking in a decade. And that is why the volume as far as the report. But let me get to the main points of it with respect to the presentation. So I am on slide two of the presentation. So in preparing the study and staff's objectives on behalf of the city with respect to looking at rates to fund operations, capital and debt, but really our focus was on figuring out what is that revenue sufficiency? What does the city need on an annual basis in revenue to cover cash needs for operations? To cover any pay-go capital, debt service and reserves? It was our direction that really the city seeks to minimize the use of debt for capital improvements for the utilities where possible. That's why when I get to rates in a moment, you're going to see some larger rate increases proposed over the next two years. The reason for that is the city needs to quickly build up some of those cash balances in advance of the water improvement project and to reduce the amount of bonds that would otherwise have to be issued. Ultimately, that is a policy decision of the city council, but this plan achieves that minimizing debt and achieving that revenue sufficiency. We, of course, also look at utility rate adjustments and what would be needed in order to achieve that revenue sufficiency. I'm now on slide three. Slide three is a snapshot and presented in the same way in your ordinance when you adopt fee schedules and you adopt your fees on an annual basis. This is taking a longer-term view and I say snapshot because on slide three, it shows proposed rates through '25 and 2029. The plan, the actual report, goes out longer than that into the 30s. The first portion of this has the sewer rate schedule and the base rate. There is no proposed change to your rate structure. We found that to be appropriate. Our focus is, was on what do those rates need to be in order to achieve that revenue sufficiency? So for the sewer, you can see those rates and then the water. I actually want to turn you, because those numbers in and of themselves are probably kind of hard to understand. I want to turn you to page four, which shows the annual percent change. So it's simply looking at those rates that are on slide three and comparing it on an annual percent basis, what the change would be. And in a moment, when we go to slide five, we'll show you some example of low, medium and high-volume customer. So on the sewer, the rate increases are in that 3% to 4.5% range over the period that is shown here, '25 to '29. For year '25, which would be the upcoming year where you would actually approve them, it is at that 3% level. Water rates, you have a number of fees for applicant fees, meters, et cetera. That for '25 and in the future years is in that 3%, 4% more inflationary level increase. It is when you get down to the residential and the commercial base rate and the tier rates. And the tier rates are how volume is charged. You see significant changes there in the 30% range. The reason for that is this is front-loaded in order to put in place the rates that are necessary to provide the cash to fund your capital improvement plan. I would note, because it is front-loaded in the out-years, there is no rate increases proposed, meaning you don't continuously need to have that level of rate increases once you have put in place the cash that is needed. An alternative would be to spread that out, but that would require more debt issuance than what is included in this plan. And the plan is based upon the capital improvement that the city council and the city has studied. To make that maybe more meaningful when you see the 30%, what would that mean to a low, medium and high-volume customer? On page five is that example. I see we cut off years which are shaded, so let me point out what the, which years correspond. So this is showing through '24 and '25, excuse me, '23, '24 and '25, the third column being 2025. So on a dollar basis, for a low-volume customer for 2025, their proposed monthly bill would go up by about $7.60. For a medium volume defined as 6,000 gallons billed, their monthly bill would go up by an estimated $14.55. For a higher volume, and higher volume here at 10,000 gallons monthly, their bill would go up by $21.50. There's a couple of years, as noted, of those larger increases and then it significantly tapers off with no planned increases in the water rates after year 2026. I would note, that could change if your capital improvement plan changed or some other unexpected events were to occur, but at least based upon the assumptions upon which this report was developed, after you get past those two years of larger rate increases, then it would be held flat. On slide six, and actually the next three slides, for those who just prefer to look at this graphically, this is just graphing up that same information that I just walked through. So the first slide on slide six is showing you that low-volume residential customer at 2,000 gallons per month, what their total bill graphically shown for sanitary sewer in blue and water bill in green and then the yellow line with the axis on the right being the annual percent change in combined water and sewer bills. Again, same information that is on slide five, just shown graphically. The same would be true for slide seven. For those that prefer to look at it graphically, you can see for what's defined as a medium-volume customer, what their bill would look like. And again, after year 2026 increases, then tapering off and remaining relatively flat. And the last comparison would be on slide eight for a high-volume residential customer, showing that comparison. And again, after year '26, very modest changes in that, or excuse me, monthly bill. Now I want to switch from talking about customer rates to actually talking about the funds and why those rates are being proposed. Slide nine shows the water fund. The blue line shows the projected, this is projected, ending cash position with the proposed rate increases in the plan. The line below that, the green line, represents the desired minimum ending cash position. Minimum ending cash position is defined as cash sufficient to cover five months of operating costs, any planned pay-go capital, and there is planned pay-go capital, and the following year debt service, ensuring that you have cash on hand. The difference between the blue line and the green line is the projected reserves. And you might say, Ms. Amdal, why does it show such a drastic increase in the spread between the minimum and the projected ending? That has to do with the need for those rate increases over the next two years to build up that cash in advance of the project in 2027 for water to minimize that bonding. The reason that after year 2026 in the out-years, there is no proposed change to the water rates is because you don't need to continue to accumulate that cash. This delta here that you see in those represent dollars and again, this is over a decade. There are a lot of assumptions, but this means that the fund on a projected basis would continue to build up cash, excuse me, for future capital improvements and projects that you may program. We'll get into that in a little bit more in a moment. Slide 10 is showing you a breakdown of that with the blue being the cash projected to be available for future capital and unassigned. As noted in the graph that I just went through, that will grow, is projected to grow over time. The red or the orange color is for planned capital, so pay-go. In 2026, you can see that being your largest project for the, related to the water tower. The yellow pursuant to your policy is the cash projected to be available to cover five months of operating cash for unforeseen events and the green being for the following year debt service. And in the case of on a planned basis, this shows that your debt service payable from water revenue declining over time. And that's because the strategy here would be to minimize the issuance of new debt, so you're not taking on more debt and having that debt service. The last one on water on slide 11 is the water fund comparison of revenues and expenses. And in this case, expenses includes depreciation. Depreciation is simply spreading capital assets over time and depreciating them. Here you see more revenue projected than expense, all consistent with that projected increase in cash balance that I have been reviewing. Now I'm going to switch from talking about water to sewer and then I will, I will be wrapping up. The cash balance in sewer and the financial position of the fund is sound and is projected to be sound, but it does not have the same amount of cash reserves as the water fund, nor does it have the same demand or capital projects as the water fund is projected to have. On slide 12, same concept. That blue line is showing you on a projected basis, the ending cash position, assuming the proposed rate increases in that inflationary level are put into place. The green line represents, as defined, what you would need at a minimum basis. Minimum to cover your policy of five months operating cash, pay-go capital and following year debt service. The sewer fund is projected to have cash available as well for future capital unassigned. The total dollar amounts, again, less than water, so as you look at slide 13, on the left-hand, the axis is $1 million compared to the larger amount in the water fund. So here you can see the, um, there is no debt service. There is no debt payable from sewer fund, so there is no green bar. The yellow is for five months of operating cash. Cash will be sufficient for that. Planned capital, there is capital planned to be funded out of sewer on a cash basis and the difference being for future capital and unassigned and the sewer fund having much more modest inflationary level increases. Slide 14 shows that comparison of expense and revenue, and this is for the sewer fund. And here, these lines are almost on top of each other. It's not, expense and revenue for the sewer fund is closer because it doesn't have the same demand and need for additional revenues to support that pay-go capital. Now I'm going to switch from talking about the specific funds to talking about debt and capital. Slide 15 has debt outstanding that's payable from the utility revenues. This doesn't represent all city debt, just debt payable from utility revenue. The blue represents existing debt, which is being amortized fully over the next few years. The green represents planned new debt. In this case, the only planned new debt would be for the water fund for a potential, the Public Facilities Authority, PFA loan. And that is assumed that that project, the water improvement project in 2027 would be paid 70% from debt and 30% from revenues subject to your putting in place the proposed rate increases and generating that cash. Slide 16 has total annual debt service. Debt service means principal and interest payments. So as noted previously, you do have some debt outstanding that's payable from the utility revenues. That debt will be paid off in 2028, so you see that blue going away. The green represents the estimated new debt service and debt services, principal and interest that will be payable on the PFA loan for water improvement. In summary, on slide 17, your funds are in sound financial condition. The purpose of this study is to prepare a plan to ensure that those funds remain in sound financial condition. That future financial condition will be impacted by operating costs and as importantly, by your capital improvement costs. This plan is based upon estimates. Those actual costs may vary from those estimates. Increases to fees charged for water and sewer are necessary to maintain that revenue sufficiency for services, including for capital improvements. And I would add, including needing your pay-go strategy versus debt issuance into the future for these projects. And bonding, to last point then, bonding for capital improvement will help to minimize the fee increases that will otherwise be needed. So there's not, it's not that there's no debt issuance. The PFA loan is included in here and that is debt. But in order to help minimize the amount that you would borrow from the PFA, it does, the plan does propose those larger next two years and that 30% level rate increases for water with sewer being significantly less at the inflationary and 3% range. Mayor Council, that was a lot of information and a large report for you to digest. I am happy to answer any questions or take any feedback on the report. Thank you.
Can you jump back to 10?
Yeah.
So, just so I'm reading this right, so after '27, you know, we'll take on debt for the water tower. That would be the green?
So the green is the, um, the debt service, so yet that's all combined. So the green includes debt service on bonds that are currently outstanding as well as the debt that will be payable on the PFA loan, based upon the assumptions in the report.
So the blue above then is above and beyond all that?
That is above and beyond. So you might say, well, why, why are you showing that buildup of cash? That is a council decision, meaning you could, in effect, say, well, couldn't we reduce rates then? After, the answer to that is yes, but the challenge for you becomes then, do you find yourself in a position like you are now where you don't have that cash on hand when you have those capital needs come up? And then you would be faced with having to do rate increases in the future. This leaves it flat, but that is your decision. You might say, you know what, I, we, we just don't know what those projects would be. We see no need to accumulate that cash. see no need to accumulate that cash, so after we accomplish what we need to with the rate increases over the next two years, then we will reduce water rates. I would caution you, having worked and, working with many different cities, that can become challenging because in the near term, that might seem very logical as you look at this, but I would also point, this is a very long term, this is a decade. You may not have all of your capital needs, your water improvements, fully programmed in your CIP and then that will put you back in a position potentially, when those projects become known, of having to issue debt for those projects. And you may be okay with that, that is a city council decision.
I don't really know, have we up them lately?
It wasn't too long ago.
We didn't do anything last year. We had small increases along the way.
But we haven't had a large project like this?
No.
I mean, we cannot raise them and then we're gonna take on debt, so we've gotta pay either way.
Either way, yeah. And, you know, you've got, you know, the Malacca Junction coming up, there could be that potential with any of our street projects that we're gonna have some water and sewer within the street projects, so you gotta think about those.
So could some of this money be used for the '23 project?
When we do the PFA, that would be for the water tower rehabilitation?
No, but just, 'cause we have this, the blue money, using that graph, could we use some of that for the Highway 23 project?
You could, for our portion of the water and sewer that is.
Or whatever else is gonna come up in that thing.
It's gonna be probably well over $250,000 by the time the bids go out or even higher. So by building that cash during the term of that, there might be some lead line replacements. We have 131 lines that have been identified as galvanized or unknown, unknown what lines they are. They're still working on the process of, you know, it, there'd be no cost to the resident. It's a grant program and then, you know, try to replace, you know, 131 lines in, in a year could be very expensive depending on the cost, so just keep that in the back of your mind too, that if we build up cash for that project, hopefully not to grant, it doesn't get phased out with legislative funding. So, I mean, there is a, a lot of, every year we do this sanitary sewer line lining, that's over $100,000 each year and we're gonna need to replace generators, lift stations, you gotta think about all of the operating that comes into place with all of water and sewers, so. Just trying to plan that out for the future so that we're not caught off-guard.
So the short version is, you need that early bump so you can take care of the water tower without taking on additional debt and then you'll have some operating money to take care of all the other things that tend to go wrong?
That is correct, but it will be the council's decision, 'cause you are correct to ask me about that chart, that could you drop rates then? You could, but all the reasons you may not want to that you were just discussing.
Yep, okay. And tonight, all we're doing is accepting the study.
Exactly.
Yep.
Any rate increases will come at your December council meeting, under the schedule.
Any else have any questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, please.
A second.
There are no other questions, all in favor of the rate study indicate with an eye?
Aye.
Opposed, rate study passes, thank you very much for your presentation.
Mayor Council, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was Lindsey and Kami? Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just like that, we jump from nine to six sixteen and I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor indicate with an eye?
Aye.
Eye, and we adjourn.